Evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here today. We do have a packed house. Thank you all for joining us with this Board of Commissioners meeting on January 24th, 2023. As is custom, we have an invocation and pledge prior to the official start of our meeting, and I'm glad that we have Pastor Clifford McGrady of New Unity Christian Fellowship Church. He will be bringing our invocation, which will be followed by the pledge by Officer A.J. Joliet. For those of you who are willing and able, please rise for our invocation and pledge.
Father, now in Jesus' name we come saying thank you, we bless you, and we honor you. We thank you for the gift of life, health, and strength. Father, I pray that your wisdom and your knowledge lead and guide these appointed elected officials tonight. We pray that their intentions be seasoned with grace. In Jesus' name I pray with faith believing. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Our meeting is now officially called to order. We have two presentations at the top of this meeting. Our first presentation will be brought by Commissioner Richardson.
Presume I'll take one of them so I can read off of it. Thank you. So, really just here to acknowledge that there was a program in collaboration done with several of our county departments to work with students from our school system in making sure that they had some CPR training and some other lifesaving training as well. So, I want to say I appreciate you, Laura Judge, for helping pull that together and make sure that our schools have been heavily involved, and I look forward to continuing this. But we wanted to recognize the students that did participate in the program, and that was Alex Judge, Anne Edge, Brooklyn Pollan, Colleen Cowell, Corinne Stewart, Dean Mockery, Emily Beard, Erin Peel, Fred Cox, Shittish Badh, Lakarak Shita, Mia Golson, Nefemi Railey, Robina Seth, Shubham Sanali, and Te Hal. So, thank you for participating in that program. Just a round of applause for those students. And certainly a round of applause for Laura Judge in spearheading that and taking that off the ground. So, they will be receiving the certificate of recognition. So, it'll say, "The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you on successfully completing the first aid and CPR training program hosted by the District Two Community Cabinet, Cobb County Emergency Management Agency, and Cobb Fire, October 17th, 2022. The Board of Commissioners is proud of your newly-equipped lifesaving awareness skills. We applaud your determination and tenacity in learning such vital skills and techniques." So, congratulations. And Laura, would you like to share any words?
I would like to thank Cobb Fire and Cobb Emergency Management Services for helping make this program a success. Without them, I could not do it. Also, to Cobb County Libraries, who gave me the space as well. So, it was group effort. So, thank you. And thank you for allowing me to reach out to our students in the community.
Absolutely. Thank you again.
Our next presentation will be brought by Commissioner Gambrell. And as I share, commissioners, due to the significance of this, I ask that we all join her down in front of the dais. Thank you.
And can we have Dr. Gullidge and his staff from the medical examiner's office to join us, please?
Is Dr. Gullidge here? We will move on with the presentation in his absence. Come on, we'll go ahead and do it. Yes.
Did we want to see a piece in the overflow room?
I've asked, but would keep him moving.
Okay. It is a great honor that the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates your office on attaining full accreditation from the National Association of Medical Examiners after years of focused effort and upgrades. Your leadership, which began in 2015, was one of the key reasons cited for this achievement. Likewise, the hard work and dedication of your staff was essential for obtaining the first-ever full accreditation for the Cobb County Medical Examiner's Office. We have no doubt your office will continue to provide stellar service to our community. This is the 24th day of January 2023.
I would just like to say, congratulations, Dr. Gullidge and your staff. This has been a long time coming, that he has worked diligently on for many years. And I'm just proud to say that I was a part of this when it happened, and when it started and when it happened. And we couldn't be more proud of Dr. Gullidge and his staff. He stuck through, stuck with it all the way through, and now we are fully accredited and the best medical examiner's office in the country.
Ditto to what Commissioner Burl shared. She and I were both here on the board when we started to learn of issues in the ME's office. And we started to learn of those issues because of Citizen, just like you, came to our meeting and let us know of some challenges that he had with our department. And through his persistence and his research, we began to make some inquiry of our own and saw that we had opportunity to improve our operation. So, I want to thank him personally. I also want to thank Dr. Gullidge and his entire team. We could not have done this without you. We know it's been particularly challenging to stay stalwart in this accomplishment, particularly during a pandemic. But you did it, and you made us shine because of your commitment. And again, echoing the sentiments of my peers, thank you so much. And I know this is going to mean a lot for our families here in Cobb County for generations to come. Thank you.
We are now at public comment, and I will turn things over to our county attorney.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Just as a reminder, please silence and turn off your cell phones. That sometimes interferes with the meeting broadcast. As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. When you come to the podium, please state your name, and if you're speaking, on behalf of any organization. All comments should be addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. However, the comments should not be impertinent, derogatory, offensive, or slanderous. To that end, the Board encourages, regardless of the topic, the audience to be respectful and courteous to the speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And just as a reminder to those people that are speaking, there is a timer on the podium for your five minutes. With that said, the first speaker is Sabrina Mao.
I am Sabrina Mao. I live in East Cobb ever since 1983. So, this will be my 40th year as Cobb resident. I was in District Two, but according to the new drawn map, I was, I was, I'm now assigned to District Three. Accordingly, this is how I voted last May and last November. This map was certified by the General Assembly, signed into law, and certified by BOE, Board of Election, and was officially signed and certified by our governor, Kemp. The map is the certified legal, this, this map is the certified legal map, and this is the map we voted accordingly. This new proposed map has been gone through proper legal procedures, therefore it's not legal binding, and thus cannot be used or applied. We are a free republican nation. Our country is governed by law and order. So is our state. We're not like the communist country. Everything is dictated from the top. Therefore, we cannot change a legal lawful orders just because someone doesn't like it and wants to change it according to someone's preference. If you want to, there is a procedure to follow. You just can't do it according to your own liking. So, I am here strongly urge the BOC, Board of Commissioners, to do the right thing and carry out the order certified by the General Assembly, signed into law, and certified by the BOE, and signed and certified by the Georgia Governor Kemp, and not to do something that is illegal. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your time. God bless.
My name is Dan Hydrick. I too have been in Cobb County since 1986. I am raised, I raised my family here. I have a business for over 35 years here. I am a Vietnam veteran, and I want to tell you that for one reason. The committees that I have served on here, the County Accountability Court, the Sheriff's Department to help build a pod to take care of our veterans, serving on the committee with Commissioner Richardson, as her Veterans Affairs. These things are the heart of Cobb County. These things are what we live for. My veterans need all the commissioners to stay focused. We lose every day. We need you every day. So, here's my comment. I want the Board of Commissioners and the people of Cobb County to know this issue of redistricting is just an act predicated outside of my district. In the dead of night, without the will of the people, nothing more than a political advantage taken. In addition, now it seems some have even taken it a little too far. And as an old soldier, that's too far. We are all one people. We need to act like that. The measure for redistricting, I ask the question, why? What is the driving forces behind the need to remove such a person? Who fights so hard for veterans' rights and needs of other people in our district? Who's willing to collaborate with others, other commissioners to help veterans? You guys work well together. We're trying to keep Dobbin strong so that we can, they can be a part of Cobb County. Who are those who seek to divide the county? My district. What do they hope to gain? Why my district? These answers are silly. Excuse me, these questions are silly. I think we all know the answers. Commissioners, the veterans of your district expect you to do your job, and we believe you have. Please continue to serve without distraction. Stand guard. Maintain order. Continue to serve your district. That is always what they admit, they elected you for. The people of East Cobb, District Two, voted a legal, in a legal district. We put the person in where we knew that they would do the best job. My oath as a soldier is to defend country and the Constitution of the United States, and it doesn't have an expiration date, nor does yours. Thank you for your time.
Kevin Redman.
I'm Kevin Redman from East Cobb in District Two. Go ahead.
Yes, please bear with us as we work through audio.
Do you want to do it the old-fashioned? Yeah.
Bill, can we reset the clock, please?
Hi, David.
Okay, thank you.
The Board of Commissioners successfully voted to use home rule, taking back local control and allowing Commissioner.
Commissioners successfully voted to use home rule, taking back local control and allowing Commissioner Richardson to continue to serve through her term here in District Two. There's still a lot of work ahead of us, and there's a lot to unpack in these October meetings, but there was one topic discussed that really resonated with me, and that was just move. Just for some context, after Commissioner Richardson was elected, she moved from one area in her district to another area in her district. But this didn't sit well with a couple of state representatives. She subsequently authored the House bill that drew her out of her district in the middle of her term.
Commissioner Richardson moved dramatically across her district. Commissioner Richardson moved from essentially the Delk Road area. She basically moved to a precinct called High Tower Trail 01. And that's actually probably within a mile of my house. That was a move of seven to eight miles. She can absolutely serve out the rest of her term. She would just be required to move back to that area near where her base of support was from an election standpoint in 2020.
Prior to drawing these maps, did you ask for the members of the commission for their addresses?
No, I did not, none of them.
When she did move, she remained within her current district.
She did.
She didn't move out of the district.
That's correct.
And what would happen if she was unable to move? It's a pretty big task to ask somebody to move in.
Unable to move?
Mm-hmm. Back into the district.
I don't see how that's even a possibility.
Well, not all of us can just pick up and move. I couldn't move.
And this talking point was repeated by a party leader in Cobb?
I really like Jerica Richardson. I think she's a lovely individual.
This isn't true, by the way.
Jerica was drawn out of her district, and it's so hard because Jerica's just so cute, and she's so sweet, and she's a total Marxist.
But let's keep going.
If Commissioner Richardson truly cared, she would run in the newly redrawn District Three primary, or she could have moved, or she would not have moved.
And then it continued to be repeated by the public.
Ms. Richardson moved three or four months after she got elected. Instead of just moving a little ways where she used to live, she moved all the way across District Two.
Move to the perimeter of your district and then be a victim of it? I don't think so.
All you have to do is move back to your district. Why don't you just move back in the district? And why doesn't the commissioner move back into the district?
But then some powerful perspective broke through the noise.
My name is Valerie Richardson. I'm a resident of Cobb County, District One, and mother of Jerica, I'm sorry, Commissioner Jerica Richardson. I come to you this evening with a couple of words that stand out in my mind and in my heart. Appalled and audacity. Appalled that a nonchalant comment could be made that Commissioner Richardson should simply move as she's young and urban. The audacity to think that a person who purchased a home carefully selected in her elected district and where she grew up should simply move.
I am equally appalled by comments that Commissioner Richardson should just move. I've been around the sun enough times to share that that has a feeling, a historic sentiment, that you don't belong. Go back where you came from. You shouldn't be here. You should have known not to move here. How dare you? How dare you move to the end of your district, a district to which she lives and serves? She has every right to move anywhere within her district.
I feel like when we talk about Commissioner Richardson should move, I feel like this is another one of those things where we blame the victim. You did this. You wanted the attention. Where have we heard that before? You brought this on yourself. You wanted the attention.
And this is why we continue to defend local control.
Mr. Redman, your time's up.
Learn how to get involved at drawnoutga.com. We'll reach out to you.
The next speaker is Matthew Stegall.
My name is Matt Stegall. I live in Cobb County. I grew up here in Cobb County. I plan to raise my son here in Cobb County. And for all its faults, I love Cobb County. I'm an advocate to move this county forward with better transit, more sustainability, and safe streets. And I wish I was up here talking about that tonight. I struggled with what to say in this moment. Should I even say anything at all? As I look at the current situation, the political theater currently happening, while the county has so much going on, the misinformation in the press, I've come to the conclusion that I cannot be silent. I will say what needs to be said so it goes in the public record. I think what is happening today is yet another echo of history of both this great and flawed county. So, I will go through a timeline of dates that leads us to where we are today. 1917. The Neil Primary Act of 1917 formalized the county rule system. That system gave more voting power to white rural voters at the expense of a growing urban voter bloc. December 1st, 1955. Rosa Parks is jailed for refusing to give up her seat on the bus, which sparked the Montgomery Bus Boycott and a widespread national civil rights movement. I'll get back to that later. June 22nd, 1964. During a period of integration, civil rights and the previous county rule system being overturned by federal courts, the state of Georgia starts the runoff, starts the runoff voting system, requiring a candidate to receive the majority of votes to win office. The bill's sponsor, Denmark Grover of Macon, was explicit and direct with the racist purpose of this bill, to reduce the ever-increasing power of black voters. Due to time constraints, we need to skip ahead about 50 years. I don't have enough time to talk about the Chattahoochee Plantation, multiple zoning issues, lost transit votes, or even why we didn't host anything with the Olympics. During that time, Cobb also grew and became more diverse. And that leads us to more recently. November 3rd, 2020. Jerica Richardson wins a four-year, I repeat, a four-year term to represent District Two with 53,776 voters voting for her to serve a four-year term. Did I mention it was four years? I also want to emphasize that 53,776 voters exercised their right to vote for their representative to represent them for that four-year term. The impact, the impact of this vote was historic, as Commissioner, as Commissioner Richardson joins two other black women to represent the first majority of progressive commissioners leading this county forward. Now, let's go to March 2nd, 2022. A new commissioner district map is enacted by Georgia, which draws Commissioner Richardson out of the district she represents. It's my understanding that this is the first time in Georgia history an elected official is redrawn out of her own district. October 25th, 2022. Cobb County passes with a 3-2 vote along party lines to submit a second competing map. And let's be honest, I'm not a lawyer, and at this point, the legal system will decide what happens. What I do know is that this county has lots of problems and issues it currently faces. So, on January 10th, 2023, we had our first meeting in this legal purgatory our county now faces. I knew that day would be important, so I was one of the few people here in attendance. And when the time came to vote on the needs of the people in our county, two commissioners decided to forego their elected responsibility and abstain from voting without valid reason. And after repeated efforts to get them to vote and clarification that they either must register their vote or remove themselves from the dais, they chose to be removed from the dais. At a point of clarification, they were not ordered to the back of their room. They left the dais, they left the room, and they came back and they seated themselves in the back. Then, visits continued with the three participative, participating commissioners remaining. As someone who lives in Cobb County and goes to a lot of these meetings, that day was chaotic, confusing, and honestly disappointing. Unfortunately, that wasn't the end of it. On January 12th, 2023, State Rep. Jenny Earhart, who wasn't even in attendance at that meeting, wrote to the MDJ and said, I quote, "Kelly Gambrell and Joanne Burl are the new Rosa Parks of the Cobb Boast." Wow. She claims that that was because they were ordered to the back of the room. Everyone in attendance knew that that did not happen. To even invoke the sacrifices that Rosa Parks made to score some political points is just, I mean, we've got to be better. We've got to be. And I wanted to put all this in the historical context. For generations, voters of color have been marginalized and silenced using systems like county rule, runoff voting, and redistricting. So, here we are to So here we are today, January 24, 2023. How will the rest of history view this county? How will this county be written? Will we work together and move forward, or will we continue taking steps back in the vision? Thank you.
Mr. Redmond.
Name is Leroy Emkin. I lived in Cobb County for 22 years and plan on living here for an additional 22 years. No, 32 years. All the speakers before me completely missed the point. I understand the issues that they're concerned about, but that's not the point. The point is the law. District boundaries are voted on by the state legislature and signed by the governor into It's not signed into law according to the feelings of the public, not my feelings, not your feelings, other than the votes that we make. So I'd like to remind everybody about the law. In a letter of October 3 to Representative Ed Setzler in the Georgia House of Representatives from Rick Ruskel, Legislative Counsel, the Attorney for the House of Representatives, the Georgia House, and I'd like to read one paragraph from his letter. Based on the fact that the Georgia Constitution explicitly prohibits counties from using home rule powers on matters affecting the procedures for election of county commissioners, the lack of any statutory redistricting powers, and the findings of the United States District Court for the Northern District of Georgia, including the holding in a case directly related to redistricting in Cobb County, it appears that the Cobb County Board of Commissioners lacks any authority to adopt or enact any resolutions or ordinances that change the boundaries of one or more of the election districts provided for in an act created by the Board of Commissioners of Cobb County. The state legislature is the only entity that has the legal authority to set district boundaries, not the county. In a letter dated December 22 of this year, from Counsel Ryan Germany, General Counsel of the Office of the Secretary of State of the State of Georgia, to Mr. Rowling, the Cobb County Attorney, and he wrote, the Secretary of State's attorney said, "A copy of your letter," a letter written by Mr. Rowling to the Secretary of State, "a copy of your letter and the required documents are enclosed for your reference. These documents bear a filing date of October 26." And it goes on to explain that they were all filed appropriately regarding the resolution that was passed by the Board of Commissioners. And then he says, "In fact, it appears that the amendment," that is the amendment that was embodied in the Board of Commissioners's resolution amending the district boundaries, "it appears that the amendment is very likely an unauthorized exercise of authority by the Cobb County Commission that does not comply with Georgia law or the Georgia Constitution." I feel for the Commissioner that may have to vacate her seat. But the law is the law. The place to go is to the state legislature and have them consider this issue, have them do whatever is necessary to provide whatever changes you wish to be made that would enable the Commissioner to stay in her seat. But at the present time, it is clear from the attorney, from the Secretary of State's office, and the state legislature, the county does not have the authority. No county in the state of Georgia has the authority to use, according to the Georgia Constitution, to redistrict district boundaries that are voted on and approved, voted on by the legislature and approved by the governor. The law is the law. And I ask that the Board of Commissioners respect that law and use the district boundaries, the map that was passed by the state legislature and approved by Governor Kemp. Thank you.
John McLean.
My name is John McLean, and I've also been a resident of Cobb County since 2001. You know, I was struck by when we were saying the Pledge of Allegiance, that we're all supposed to honor that flag, and you guys swore an oath to honor the state constitution and the U.S. Constitution. And I don't think you're doing that. Like Leroy said, the law is the law. You know, there's a lot of things I don't like. I don't like, the last time I came up here, I spoke a few seconds longer than five minutes, and the chair asked the sheriff's deputy to come remove me. I didn't like that. Reminds me of two weeks ago. There's a speed limit, there's a speed limit sign in front of, in my neighborhood that says 25 miles an hour. Now, I'll obey it, but I may not like it, but I obey it. There's a stop sign at the intersection. I have to obey it. Well, the state constitution decides how redistricting happens, and you have to obey it. There are ways to address redistricting if you don't like it. It's Senate Bill 177, passed in 2019, which allows you to pick a legislator and present it to the General Assembly for a vote, meaning the General Assembly has the right to decide yea or nay. You don't. Now, I live in Kelly Gambrill's district, and I strongly support her, and I don't like the way she was treated last meeting. And as far as I'm concerned, removing her from this board in the middle of that meeting or the early beginning of that meeting disenfranchises me. And the same thing happened for Joanne's district. I don't like it one bit. I'm not going to stand for it anymore. As far as I'm concerned, this is as close to insurrection as I can possibly imagine. I worry about the opinions that the county attorney has been offering. I wonder, after this is resolved, and it will be resolved, and the legislature will win, but I worry what the outcome is going to be for those that have supported this. Anyway, thank you for your time.
I believe that concludes the six speakers of our first public comment. Before we go into our consent agenda, Bill, I did ask for you to review the rules of our meeting so that it's clear.
Certainly, Chairwoman. The Board of Commissioners enabling legislation, which is Section 2.3, says that the chairman and all members of the Board of Commissioners shall be required to vote on any matter when they're here, and they should be here unless they are enbonified physically ill to the extent they are unable to attend or that they find themselves in a conflict of interest. Likewise, in our meeting rules of procedure, Section 1.0805, it says, "No Commissioner who is present at any meeting of the Commission at which an official decision, ruling, or official act is to be taken or adopted, may abstain from voting in regard to any decision, ruling, or act." In October, the Board voted to amend House Bill 1154 in order to amend the district lines. Georgia law specifies that when the laws become legally effective, in the case of home rule amendments and local laws, the Georgia Constitution establishes the effective date for when those amendments shall take effect, and they shall become effective upon the filing with the Secretary of State's office, which occurred on October 26, 2022. Now, Georgia law also provides that after the laws take effect, they are obligatory upon all inhabitants. This means that even if a person has a good faith belief that the law is unconstitutional or invalid in some way, he or she is not at liberty to simply disregard the law based upon that personal belief. Instead, the law must be followed unless and until it has been struck down by a court of law. This concept is often referred to as the rule of law. At the present time, Commissioner Richardson is qualified to continue to serve as District Two Commissioner because she lives within the electoral boundaries for District Two as established by the amendment of the local law. Under Georgia case law, Commissioner Richardson's performance of her authorized duties as Commissioner will not become void or ultra virus acts, even if we later determined that she was disqualified due to her residency requirement.
Just want to reiterate what Bill shared, that our rules provide that Commissioners are to participate in our public meeting by voting unless they have a conflict of interest per our code. And the conflict of interest qualified in our code is a financial conflict of interest. The conflict of interest stated in our last meeting for the reason of abstention was not a financial conflict of interest. Therefore, Commissioners were required to vote. We ask for them to vote. If they do not vote and abstain for any other reason than a financial conflict, then they are not abiding by our county rules. And they will be participating in our meeting, again, not according to the stated reasons in our rules for why they can abstain. If a Commissioner were to abstain from voting, it is them, not me, that is keeping them from voting. I'm not disqualifying or keeping anyone from representing their district. In fact, I think our Board is best when we all are here. It is my desire to see us continue to serve together. It is my intention to run the meeting as such. And in running the meeting as such, there are also other rules with respect to the Chair's responsibility to keep decorum of this room. Sometimes it seems as a foreign concept when I consider some of the energy and dialogue that occurs here from our speakers, and if anyone was ever asked to remove themselves after speaking after five minutes, it probably was because they were disrespecting the decorum The county business is significant, and I look forward to us addressing it today, beginning with our consent agenda. With our consent agenda, the agenda items scrolled prior to our meeting on the screen. They will scroll on the screen after this meeting as well. We vote on consent agenda items in bank. That's in one vote. Any Commissioner has the ability to pull a matter off of the consent agenda. And it is my understanding that there is already one request to pull one agenda item off of our consent agenda before we vote on it. And that is Agenda Item Number 30 pertaining to the authorization of advertisement for and conducting a public hearing for employment of consultant services. That falls under the county manager's subject heading, so we will discuss that immediately following the consent agenda. Commissioners, before I make a motion with respect to the consent agenda, I'm going to ask if you have any other requests. And again, recognizing that we have had some revisions beyond Agenda Item Number 30, and I'll read to you those Agenda Item numbers. We've had revisions to Consent Items Eight, and I'll take time to walk through those. That's with respect to abandonment of a drainage easement in Land Lot 1031. We've had revision to Consent Item Number 16. That pertains to authorizing an extension of the contract for public facilities and services for cleaning services at Cobb Link. We've had revision to Consent Agenda Item Number 18 to approve the Cobb Link Agency Safety Plan. A revision to Consent Agenda Item Number 19 to approve the amendment of the Stout Caretaker Agreement. And finally, we've had a revision to Agenda Item Number 31, which is to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Commissioners, are there any other modifications to the consent agenda? Are there any other requests for matters to be pulled? Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Gambrill.
Yes, I'd like Agenda Item Number 31 pulled.
31. Okay, give me one moment. Okay, that's with respect to the minutes, so we'll go ahead and discuss that after we discuss the county manager's matter. Are there any other agenda items to be pulled from consent? Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised, save for matters Item 30 and 31, and that we authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Is there a second?
Second.
And is there any discussion?
Discussion. Madam Chair, if I may, I have a statement that I would like to read into the record for each vote that is cast. I do plan to vote tonight.
Thank you.
However, I do not support the home rule challenge of the majority of this Board. It is unconstitutional and illegal. I voted against the amended map three times in 2022: January 25, October 11, and October 25. I have a duty to represent my constituents and will not have my vote suppressed. As I was duly elected on November 8, 2022, under the state map, House Bill 1154, voted on by the Georgia General Assembly in February of 2022 and signed into law by Governor Kemp on March 2. It was also certified by the Board of Elections on November 15, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Gambrill.
I also have a statement that I would like to read into the record, and I will hand the clerk a copy so that this can be attached to each vote that I take tonight. When the first, Board first entered executive session in March of 2022 to discuss the home rule challenge, I challenged the county attorney's office on the premise and requested outside counsel to be sought. While the county attorney's office claims the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia provided legal advice, I too am in receipt of these documents from the ACCG regarding home rule, to which it clearly defines the limit of this Board's constitutional powers as to redistricting. I also contend that the Board of Commissioners did not follow the home rule challenge in its entirety. In addition, the Georgia Supreme Court has ruled that the Georgia Constitution limits legislative action by the Board of Commissioners to matters for which no provision has been made by general law. Furthermore, the home rule powers granted to the Board of Commissioners do not extend any manners which the General Assembly by general law has preempted, like the redistricting maps here in Cobb County, Commissioners of Wayne County versus Smith, 240 Georgia, 540 of 1978, Brophy versus McCrain, 264 Georgia, 187 of 1994. In fact, even in federal court in Georgia, the court has ruled the General Assembly is the only legislative body with the power to enact redistricting legislation for the counties. Therefore, were the General Assembly failed to enact reapportionment legislation for a certain county, although it is entitled to consideration as an express of county policy, a reapportionment plan proposed by a county was not a legislatively enacted plan requiring deferential treatment, and the district court was required to fashion a reapportionment plan. Botticker v. Taylor, 2002, U.S. District Lexis, 27447, ND, Georgia, June 5, 2002. Botticker v. Taylor, 2002, U.S. District Lexis 27447, N.D., Georgia, June 5 of 2002. Just last week, Georgia State Attorney General Chris Cowherd stated that the Cobb County Commission moved to amend its electoral redistricting map is inappropriate and not legally binding. Per the letter dated December 22, 2022, from C. Ryan Germany, General Counsel for the Office of the Secretary of State, he acknowledges the documentation received included a copy of the amendment, a copy of the required notice of publication, and an affidavit of duly authorized representative of the newspaper in which the notice was published. Mr. German's letter also states, quote, "You should not consider the ministerial function of filing the amendment with our office or the publishing of the amendment to comment on whether the amendment is allowable under state law or a proper exercise of authority by the Cobb County Commission, nor should you rely on it to attempt to establish the validity of the amendment." In fact, he continues, "It appears that the amendment is very likely an unauthorized exercise of authority by the Cobb County Commissioner that does not comply with Georgia law or the state constitution." With the majority of this Board's actions on October 25 of 2022 and the resulting filing and recording with the Office of the Secretary of State on October 26, 2022, the boundaries of the districts from which the County Commissioners were elected in Districts One and Three were changed 14 days prior to the general election and eight days after early voting had begun, using district boundaries for Districts One and Three as approved by the Governor. Furthermore, the Board of Elections certified the election of Commissioners in Districts One and Three using the map as approved by the Governor on March 2 of 2022, on November 15 of 2022, and not the maps that the Board of Commissioners made effective on October 26, 2022. In a letter dated October 3 of 2022, Deputy Legislative Counsel D. Stewart Morelli, quote, "It is practically indisputable that a county home rule resolution or ordinance changing the boundaries of the districts from which County Commissioners are elected would be an action affecting the procedure for the election of the county's governing authority." OCGA 3635 4.1, no such statutory authority exists for Georgia counties. Just two weeks ago, I was unjustifiably removed from this dais and prevented from representing my constituents and carrying out the duties I was elected to perform based on an opinion that is not supported by law or policies of this Board." Per Louis D. Brandis, quote, "Our government teaches the whole people by its example. If the government becomes a lawbreaker, it breeds contempt for law, invites every man to become a law unto himself, it invites anarchy." While I am here representing my constituents and fulfilling my duties and as an elected official, I hereby request the clerk to attach this statement to each vote that is recorded herein.
Okay, so we have both of those statements entered into the record. We have a motion in the second. Is there any additional discussion? I'll call the question. The vote passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We are now moving back to Agenda Item Number 30. It's the Commissioner, uh, excuse me, County Manager's Agenda Item, which will be presented, I believe, by our Deputy County Manager, Jimmy Gucy.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. We're requesting that the Board authorize the advertisement for and the conduct of a public hearing prior to the employment of a consulting firm where fees are likely to exceed $100,000 to provide state and federal legislative consulting services.
All right, I move that we approve the agenda item as it has been presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. Yes, I would just like to say that this Agenda Item is, was in the budget since 2019, and it is of an amount of $250,000 for state and federal lobbyists that we have been using two, and this is to consolidate and go out to bid for one to do both federal and state. And I am supportive of this. It's in the budget for the past three years, and I just want to, I know it will come back to us once the bids go out, but I just want to make sure that it's capped at the, hopefully capped at the 250 mark.
Yes, ma'am. We will also have the public hearing as well, where folks can weigh in.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a second? Again, there was a second. Any, excuse me, any additional discussion? All right, we'll call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We are now going to Agenda Item Number 31, which is to approve the minutes. And I believe this is a first that I've seen of you presenting before us. But we, hopefully, we will not bite. I was gonna say, we do not bite, but hopefully we will not bite.
Yeah, good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners, County Manager. I am presenting the minutes for the adoption tonight. The minutes would be for the January 9, 2023 Agenda Work Session, the January 10, 2023 BOC Regular Meeting, and the December 13, 2022 BOC Work Session Minutes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you, Pam. I know we had quite a robust discussion yesterday in work session regarding this, and I hope those of you who made comment that Commissioner Burl and I did not vote clearly look at the clerk's minutes, because the clerk's minutes have us recorded as being voting, right down to the executive session that I know I did not vote on. So I do have discrepancies with the minutes. In the past four years as a member of this Board, I do not recall a single instance where I did not support the minutes put forth by the clerk. While I understand the clerk has a commitment to accuracy, professionalism, and superior customer service, how can this be done with the various sources that are in conflict with each other? If you go to the county's Video on Demand tab, there you will find the Board of Commissioners meeting labeled January 9, 2023. Per the county's YouTube page, the meeting is January 10, 2023. I have listened to the recording that was done on the Voice IQ and supported by DECA, and I, interestingly enough, the quality of the recording changes at the time the vote to go into executive session supposedly occurred. When the Board returned from executive session, the quality of the tape was poor and barely audible in recording the conversations of the Commissioners, just as it was leading up to the first recess prior to the Board leaving the room. In addition, the Chair also, at 3530 and 3533 of the YouTube video, that is dated January 10 of 2023, because again, the timing is different between all these different sources, the Chair adjourns the meeting. This is not reflected in the minutes, nor was the, it reflected that the meeting was called back to order. There is a difference, according to Roberts Rules, as far as adjournment and recess. In addition, I would like to make a request of the County Manager, Dr. Jackie McMorris, to send this recorded Voice IQ file from the January 10, 2023 meeting to an outside source, along with the video recordings, to have a forensic audit done to see if the (applause) to ensure the integrity of our systems are in place. I also find it very interesting that this Board that we have here that records our votes does not record it electronically each time it is done. This day and age when we're upgrading our electronic systems, I was surprised to learn that we do not record our votes.
Thank you. I find this to be a very disheartening day.[1169.13][1169.13](applause) Please, I'm sorry, I'm not here to entertain. This is a first that I've ever seen the county clerk called up, and this is a job that is not without commensurate honor for the work that they do and for all of the time and commitment that they take to keep our county running. This is not the first time we've had questions with respect to the minutes. It is the Commissioner's responsibility for the ultimate keeping of minutes. To the best of the clerk's ability, they draft them. It is our responsibility to approve it and make sure that they're accurate. And if anyone has an issue with it, we can bring it up at any time. But I think it's an unfortunate day when we do it publicly in this manner. With our, with debating our county clerk, it is, when we've had this discussion, their role is primarily administrative. And again, regardless of what was seen on the video, the Commissioners were here. So I just want to speak to some facts. At our last meeting, the video did not run during a brief portion of the time that our meeting was going on. As one of our speakers said, there was confusion in our last meeting, and there was not complete sync with communication up here on the dais and with the recording of video. However, irrespective of what's recorded and what's found in a forensic audit, truth is still truth, and what the eye saw, the eyes will not unsee, and the truth that occurred cannot be undone.[1297.23][1297.23](applause) So let's speak truth. Truth of the matter is that Commissioners voted to go into Exec. Whether or not they see it on video does not take anything away from them voting in Exec. And if they believe they did not vote in Exec, as I shared yesterday, their actions ratified it when they walked upstairs, sat down, and participated in Exec.[1326.83][1326.83](applause) So if you did not believe it, then they should not have participated. So to go back and forth with the clerk who was here and saw what occurred, as everybody else did who was here, is unfortunate, is just a display of pomp to me, and it is disrespectful to the professional responsibility and duty that our clerks have to this county. Nobody will say it, I will say it. I hope this never happens again.[1354.01][1354.01](applause) Our clerk, our clerk does record the meeting. Our clerk did play the recording of the meeting for our Commissioners that have questioned the minutes. Whether or not they choose to believe the video recording or the audio recording, excuse me, is on them, and for whatever reason they choose not to believe what's on that recording, I don't think that is Pam's business. She has provided the recording. In fact, she has gone a step further to ask that the entire meeting be transcribed. Again, as we shared yesterday, if anyone objects to the minutes, this is the appropriate time to do so. But to dress down our county clerk in such a fashion, I believe, is just completely disrespectful, is unprofessional of people that have responsibility to this county day in and day out, and do it without honor or expectation of praise. Yes, Commissioner?
Madam Chair, there are other discrepancies in the minutes that I can't support.
Okay.
I don't know if you want me to go into detail at this point, but I'm just saying, it's not just the vote that wasn't recorded. If we're in a recess, we can't vote. And the vote to go into Exec, which we're told was made and that we don't recall being made, I'm just saying, if it's not recorded and not on the tape, people were here and witnessed, yea or nay, but that's one discrepancy. There were other discrepancies of, that weren't recorded, too. When we, we came back and were asked to vote on the vote we had just taken on the item number three, where we abstained, and we didn't vote, we were asked to leave by, first by the Chair, and then asked, the police were asked to escort us off. That was not recorded either. And what, another discrepancy I have is how, once we leave, you read into the record that the vote is 3-0 on the vote that was already taken, 3 to 2 when we abstained. So I can't support the minutes as presented. I've been here 12 years, and I don't recall ever voting against our minutes. And it's not a reflection on, I'm not demeaning Pam here, because a lot of it's video that wasn't recorded and, and other procedures that were taken that I don't agree with, and I can't support the minutes.
Thank you. I appreciate you sharing that.[1539.03][1539.03](applause) Hey, Pam. Thank you for all that you do at the county. You are a remarkable clerk, even recognized nationally. I appreciate everything that you do. We discussed this item yesterday at our meeting, and it was also shared that you reviewed or listened to the recording with my colleagues here. I'm not sure if some of the issues that are being discussed now were discussed with you at the time that you reviewed or listened to the recording. But if you would share, because there's concern that there was not a vote to go into Exec, I'm fairly certain there were five people that voted to go into Exec. And part of the reason I remember that is because the vote before that was to abstain, but we all voted in sync to go into Exec. So there were five yes buttons pushed to go into Exec. With respect to the video, and Bill, I don't know what the policy is, if the videos are mandatory to be shown or to record, there's some issue with some video being not, not, not shown?
No, the, well, the meeting is an open meeting here for the public. Communications, whenever, whenever the Chair or is adjourned or the meeting goes into recess, they typically turn off the cameras. And as we know, when we come back from recess or adjournment, at that point in time, there's a count-in in order for you to start back up the filming system. And I guess through that process, the count-in didn't occur, and the vote took place, and then it just stayed with the cameras off.
Okay. So there is no rule that the camera had to continue? The Chair called for recess of the
Correct. It's an open meeting, and the public is here. Everybody is here witnessing.
Right. I'm just trying to, you know, understand it. I want to be careful with my words, because I don't want to offend anyone, but I'm just trying to figure out what the fixation is on the video. The meeting, excuse me, the meeting was an open meeting, outdoors were open, the public was here, the public attended the meeting. So I'm not sure, you know, why we are getting stuck on this video piece. The only thing that I can conclude is that there is a desire to use that for some type of political fodder. I don't know.[1724.41][1724.41](laughter) It might be, this is my opinion. This is my opinion. For every speaker that goes up, they share their opinion. For every Commissioner on this dais, they share their opinion. And that's what I'm doing now, and I have every right to do that. And that's exactly what I intend to do. Words matter, and words have consequences. They have consequences. And as leaders of this county, we are responsible for our words. We are responsible for lowering the temperature in situations such as this. It is irresponsible for a leader to do otherwise. It's a complete disservice to this county and to the residents of this county and to the employees of this county. the employees of this county. It is my hope that as we move forward with the business of Cobb County, regardless of which side you fall on for home rule, it is our duty and responsibility to serve. That's why we are here. We are here to serve the people of Cobb County. And I ask of my colleagues to bear responsibility with their words, because words have consequences. Words have consequences. And that's all I have.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I am supportive of this agenda item, because the statements made in it are ones that I recall. Certainly, there is a question around recess versus adjournment, and I know that that came up in discussions, so hopefully that can be reconciled. But I want to say that I absolutely appreciate the work that you do. You have been doing it for a long time for this county, and you always bring integrity to this job. Your integrity is not in question, regardless of what may transpire on this board and its discourse.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, again, I call, we had discussion, Commissioners, I move that we approve the minutes as has been revised. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 3-2 with Commissioners Burl and Gambrell in opposition. Thank you. I see that we have the Transportation tab up, but I believe, okay, we have the District Attorneys tab. That has been pulled for today. So we will move on to DOT with Agenda Item Number 33. Thank you.
Good evening, Drew Wrestler, Cobb DOT. The Department has 10 items on the regular agenda for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company in amount not to exceed $11,458 for preliminary engineering and relocation of facilities on Shaw Road Sidewalk. Project Number X-2751 authorized a corresponding budget transaction and further authorized the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a change order number one final to the consultant services agreement with Southeastern Engineers Incorporated, a savings to the project in the amount of $5,943.20 for engineering design services of New Macklin Road, Project Number X-2608, authorized a corresponding budget transaction and further authorized the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the consultant services agreement with Southeastern Engineers Incorporated, a savings to the project in the amount of $5,943.20 for engineering design services of New Macklin Road, Project Number X-2608, authorized a corresponding budget transaction and further authorized the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one final to the consultant services agreement with AECOM Technical Services Incorporated, a savings to the project in the amount of $15,373.78 for engineering design services of Old 41 Highway Bridge over CSX Railroad, Project Number X-2116, authorized a corresponding budget transaction and further authorized the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Always good to see a savings. Motion to approve.
Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Tidwell Construction Company in amount not to exceed $642,069 for Marshall Road over Alatuna Creek, Project Number X-2115, authorized a corresponding budget transactions and further authorized the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners ratify previous action by the County Manager authorizing emergency drainage repairs on Eagle Crest Drive in response to a sinkhole and voids approved Project Number B-2268 to the 2021 Countywide Unit Price Contract with Chatfield Contracting Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $216,258 for said repairs, authorized a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorized the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Our next three items are relative to a rebuilding America Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity Grant, a raise application to the U.S. Department of Transportation. The first of those is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a resolution authorizing the submission of a raise grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Cobb Parkway and McCollum Parkway, Kennesaw-Dewes Road, Old 41 Highway Realignment Planning Project, designate Drew Wrestler and Mark Lambert as the authorized Department Representatives for all matters associated with the raise grant application, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Thank you. Similarly, our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a raise grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the East-West Connector Corridor Improvements Planning Project, designate Drew Wrestler and Mark Lambert as the authorized Department Representatives for all matters associated with raise grant application, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
And for the final raise grant application, the Department recommends the Board of Commissioners approve or adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a raise grant application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Cumberland Core Loop, also known as Cumberland Sweep Planning Project, designate Drew Wrestler and Mark Lambert as the authorized Department Representatives for all matters associated with the raise grant application, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Richardson.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our final item this evening is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing submission of an FY23 Carbon Reduction Program grant request to the Federal Transit Administration in an amount not to exceed $4,164,828 for transit capital projects, authorize the acceptance of allocated carbon reduction program funding, authorize the reallocation of previously approved federal and local funding for capital projects, authorize the corresponding budget and accounting transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman order designated to execute the necessary documents.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
We'll now hear from our Parks Department Director, Michael Brentley.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, Madam County Manager. We have one item for consideration this evening. Our item is for the Board to approve a contract with Block Safety in an amount not to exceed $277,600 to provide 16 automatic license plate recognition readers in six parks under the 2016 and 2022 Parks BLOSS program. Included in this contract are the cameras installation, system integration, and a five-year agreement for cloud hosting, cellular service, and continual software upgrades. Use of the data collected by these cameras will be governed by the Cobb Police Department's Policy 3.09 regarding license plate readers. We ask that the Board of Commissioners approve the contract in an amount not to exceed $277,600, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, so moved as presented. Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are now at Agenda Item Number 44, under Public Safety.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and County Manager. I'm Deputy Chief Steve Fasenda with the Police Department. Our item this evening is a joint item between the Police Department and Information Services to request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to purchase mobile data computers and associated specialty equipment needed to outfit 2022 SPOSS replacement public safety vehicles under provisions of the Georgia Department of Administrative Services State Contract, 2022 SPOSS Project, Police Vehicle Replacement Program B-1061, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
I believe we are at our second public comment.
The first public speaker in the second portion is William Parker.
We can move on to our next.
We'll give him an opportunity to get some water.
Good evening. My name is Mindy Seeger. I am a resident of Cobb County, Georgia, proud resident of District 2. I know that there has been much debate and contention, as this board, I believe Chair described it recently, as in our county is in a period of storming. I do want to start with, I do want to say thank you to the people that are here tonight. The public is in high attendance, and I hope that this level of civic engagement is something that we can all continue, because I think our county is better for it when we all are in attendance, and we are participating and being engaged with our local elected officials. I do want to reiterate a few matters, and I know, I feel like we've talked about this at length, but kind of for the benefit of the public, if I can, in relation to home rule, which is something I have spent a great deal of time reading and watching videos and being a part of the meetings that have happened with this, going back to the hearings that were held at the State House when all of this was going on, even when they were talking about redistricting, before the first map was ever drawn. I was in attendance to those meetings over that summer. But a few things pertinent here to Cobb County, because I like to keep things local. The county's amended map, as explained earlier by County Attorney, is the law unless a court says it is not. And by defending the county's ruling, we are protecting Cobb County from a loss of taxpayer dollars and the state of Georgia from a dangerous precedent where local officials could be drawn out via redistricting each and every legislative session. I feel that that is a danger to our republic and our local elections. People are elected duly to four-year terms, and I hope they get to serve those full four years. And I mean that for each of you. The county's home rule action protects the county from overreach and is the least costly legal options available as a result of HB 1154. While there is much hysteria surrounding the county's action and some manufactured chaos along the way, no money is being spent on the legal team in addition to their already salaried amounts. HB 1154 had gone into effect, Commissioner Richardson would have been forcibly removed from office, causing a vacancy, and the county would have to use taxpayer dollars to cost a costly special election. Additionally, in that interim, with that seat vacant, some 200,000 residents of Cobb County would go unrepresented. That's not good for our county. Litigation brought by a private citizen is not currently active, following that plaintiff's request to dismiss without prejudice and to come back at a later time. As I am aware currently, there is nothing legally in the books, in the works for that. We've been told to expect something soon, but nothing currently active. I'm pleased to see that all five voting members of this board are voting this evening, and that all five members were participating and doing the work of this county yesterday in the work session which I attended. Thank you for that, to each of you. While this may all be contentious, and we all may have opinions, I think, no offense to those in the legal profession, that is probably the only profession that has more opinions than my husband would say I do. But a court ruling could take several months. I think we all know that, once a proceeding is filed. And we need our Commissioners, all of our Commissioners and our Chair, to continue doing the business of the county, and I thank you for doing that this evening. What is not acceptable, however, is bringing race via civil rights icons into the conversation by both elected officials and the public. It is a disservice to our county. It upsets me as a citizen of this county, and it is not where we need to be. While we may all think that we are great, and I share high opinions of many people in this room, I dare say none of us, none of us, would compare to the legacy of one Ms. Rosa Parks. I also want to reiterate in my last few seconds here that all of this that we see is a direct result of HB 1154 going around the established process that was followed for 155 counties and not for four, Cobb being one of them. If the state legislature is allowed to hold that precedent, they could target a county or a Commissioner every legislative session. I believe that local maps are local matters and need to be handled locally by the delegation and in cooperation with this local body. I hope to see that going forward. I hope to see the continued cooperation I see here tonight, and I hope to see the continued civic engagement of all of you in the room. We are all needed to make Cobb County the great county that is.
Sorry, time's up. Mr. Parker, did you come?
Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, thank you. I apologize, but old people had to answer to duty. I got a message the other day from
Sir, please state your name for the
William Parker.
Thank you.
I live in Cobb County. I've been a resident of Cobb County since 1983, so 40 years. I got a message the other day, an email, from a person that said that the three-member Democratic majority of the Cobb County Board of Commissioners are trying to nullify the district lines that are redrawn with the approval of the state legislature, which must be done, so forth, so on, so on. They're doing so in order to ensure a permanent Democratic Party majority. I don't know if he intended to send that to me or not, but I got it. And I responded, so I must take issue with his position on the subject, that the Realportment Authority of Georgia reviewed the census changes in Cobb County and determined that very minimal, if any changes were needed, to adjust the Commission districts of Cobb County. The state legislative group of Cobb County agreed. And additionally, Commissioner Richardson was duly elected and certified in the 2020 election for a four-year term. She decided to relocate within the district that she represented following the election, a perfectly acceptable action to take. Some Republican representatives in the legislature decided after that fact to redraw the district boundaries. Now, I suppose, and I don't have any benefit of knowing what they were actually thinking, that their intent was as stated in the message to me, which was to prevent Democrats from having a majority on the Commission. If this was indeed their intent, then I suggest that they wait until the next election and remedy the issue. And not make a misguided attempt to remove a duly elected official from office in the middle of a term. This action only serves to nullify the votes of the people in District 2, 50-some-odd-thousand people, who decided that Commissioner Richardson was the person that they chose to represent them. And as I've said, I've lived in Cobb County for 40 years. During that time, I have been represented by a Republican Commission, the whole 40 years, up until two years ago, 38 of those 40 years. And I suggest that Republicans basically pull up the big girl and big boy pants, suck it up, and be represented by a Democratic County Commission. And at the next election, if they choose to revert to the situation that existed prior to the 2020 election, then your fears will be alleviated. You'd have a Republican County Commission again, if that's what you vote for. And in the meantime, I suggest that Republicans encourage the Georgia State Legislature to stay in its lane and let the people of Cobb County decide how they will be represented by using the old-fashioned tactic, voting, not by legislative fiat promulgated by some disgruntled old people who don't like change. Thank you.
Michael Garza.
Michael Garza.
Hi, my name is Michael Garza. I'm a small business owner who resides in Commission District Three. I want to first bring attention to the shooting death of a 13-year-old Deshaun DeBose in Atlanta over the weekend. He attended Drew Charter School, and his teacher described him as a bright light who wanted to do good in this world. While mass shootings take the spotlight, it is an act like this which is an everyday occurrence in our country. He is one of 99 teenagers to be killed by gun violence so far in 2023. Every elected official at any level of government should take Deshaun's story to heart every day and do what is in your power to keep these preventable acts from happening. That leads me to this, that while many of us wish that we had more power to affect change in our communities, some of you recently made the choice to abdicate the power you do have by refusing to take part in the work of the commission. The ridiculousness of those actions were compounded when a state rep compared you to Rosa Parks on the eve of Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. Apparently, some of us did need those history lessons in school. In her comments, she told us to imagine what it would be like for white lawmakers to remove a black lawmaker from doing their elected duty. And I guess maybe she forgot that this is exactly what the Cobb GOP is attempting to do to Commissioner Richardson. It is part of a continuing circus, that is GOP party politics, that began with the redrawing of maps for school board and the county commission. Cobb voters paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to have a law firm draw a school board map that racially gerrymandered the county and have spent millions more on top of that defending them in the courts. Now, I, along with some others here, attended those hearings last year for Cobb's maps. Almost three dozen Cobb residents showed up to speak against the maps. Only two showed up to speak in favor. Yet, commission members living collectively about 1,500 miles away from this building overrode its own local legislative processes, overrode the Cobb delegation, and tens of thousands of District Two residents. We are the only county in which this took place on this scale. And it is astounding to me that many people here who believe their votes are stolen in 2020 are okay with their votes being stolen by the state legislature two years later. Since that happened, I have listened to people within the GOP bend over backwards to tell Commissioner Richardson how much they like her and they wish there was something they could do. Their statements act as if this was just a random occurrence that she was drawn out of her seat. But we all know better. This was an intentional act by the sponsors of the map. It was an intentional act to have them approved outside of the normal local legislative process, and it was done with complicit approval by heads of the GOP. One other thing stuck with me in that meeting last year when defenders of the map kept saying the same thing over and over. This isn't personal. But as someone who has run for office myself, this is extremely personal. People don't know the personal sacrifice that you take when you run for office, the family trips you have to cancel, the outings with friends you can't make, the time with family away from your family, the invites to weddings or special events you have to decline. Every single day is spent canvassing, talking with voters, talking to donors, talking to policymakers, all with the goal of winning your election. Commissioner Richardson did all that work, and on election night, that hard work paid off. A four-year term to represent the residents of District Two, a position that she has taken seriously by tirelessly working for those residents and advocating for their needs. And then to have all of that work undercut with the stroke of a pen, there is nothing more personal than that. So to the commissioners who chose to stand on the wrong side of history, no, you are not Rosa Parks, but you can choose to alter course and not continue to be on that wrong side. Because I can guarantee you that when our children are learning about the history of Cobb, they are going to look at all of you not as Rosa Parks, not as Ruby Bridges, but as a segregationist who stood tall resisting change until the swell of progress was too much to stop. And I urge you to be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Monica Delancy.
Good evening. Monica Delancy, Riverside Community, Mapleton, Georgia. First, I would like to acknowledge N W A C P, I'm Jareen Barnes, for the nice banner, for the nice MLK program that took place on Martin Luther King Day. Want to commend the Cobb NSB for a nice job. Well done. Also, I want to thank Commissioner Sheffield for participating in the community cleanups in the Riverside community. Word of faith, performed one on January 16th, along with also Community Task Force and Destin Rural Church. And also, on the pre-Martin Luther King Day, We Thrive Riverside Rental Association did a community cleanup. So Riverside community is looking mighty clean. Thank you to those groups. We want to also congratulate, congratulations to Public High School for having their Honors Day drive-through on Saturday, January 21st. 1,028 students received honor roll certificates. So congratulations to Dr. Dana Giles. And then we also want to pray for the Blair's Bridge community, Ivory Commons, Cameron Crossing, that went through the tornado, which was classified tornado on January 12th. And I want to thank Cassie Maislum for communicating to the community about updates and that sort of thing. So thank you for that. But also, we want the home rule to save all residents. Just like you was able to find a way to keep Commissioner Richardson housed, we need to try to keep the 1,000 people that are seeing monthly in Cobb County eviction court housed as well. The rental assistance was helpful. Residents that are showing backup in eviction court have received the rental assistance, and they are being filed evicted on again. In addition, I had a phone call from a teacher that's teaching out students, calling me and telling me that after residing in apartment complex for four years, and she became late on her rent a couple of months, they filed eviction on her, and she has been sleeping in her car since November of 2022. So just like we can find a way to keep all residents housed, let's find a way to find a home rule for everyone that's being denied housing, which is a human right. Thank you so very much.
Donna Court.
Good evening. Donna Court, resident of District Two, Commissioner Richardson and private citizen and voters' education advocate, community advocate, Chair and Commissioners and Dr. McMorris and all valued employees. Thank you for all that you do. And a couple of things I wanted to acknowledge into the minutes. Chair, Cupid, you never blow your own bugle, but I did notice that you were acknowledged for the 100 most influential Georgians related to your work with the Atlanta Regional Commission. And you would, anyways, I thank you because that means a lot for the work that you all do, bringing wealth and prosperity and goodness to our county. And I think we do need to acknowledge that. It takes a village, and I thank you all kindly. So that's the good side, but I don't know about you all. I think I'm getting exhausted having to follow the news. I'm subscribing to things I'd never thought I'd subscribe to. So we're in the AJC, not for good reasons, but I do thank our valued press corps for their honesty and the fact. I think they do a good job. There are many opinions, many op-eds, which I don't necessarily concur with. And tonight, I just wanted for the minutes to thank all of our commissioners for voting. I understand that there are many high feelings, many opinions, but it's tough on everybody. It's disturbing for me to have watched the video, and I know it was harder for the people who were in the room. The disturbing part was watching the devolution of a civil society. Many of, this is what I have written individually to you all, but I did want it to be expressed in the minutes, that many in our beloved community, our beloved community, we're so proud of all the first women, our first women Board of Commissioners. Many now, most of them being outsiders from Cobb County, say, well, see what happens when we allow the women to be in charge. I noticed this, for many obvious reasons. I am a woman, but I happen to be in an empathic profession. I am a registered nurse, so I try to pick up on cues and temperatures in the room and how people are feeling. It's part of what I do. It hurts to see the toxicity that I observe directed toward my beloved community and my commissioners. This toxicity has to stop. The forces outside of Cobb County are working deliberately and maliciously to divide us. Commissioners, please continue to do your duty. I thank you all for voting tonight, but please stand together in unity. United we stand, divided we fall. And as, because we do like to quote people, "A house divided against itself will not stand," and that was President Abraham Lincoln, 16th of June, 1858. And I thank you all kindly, everyone in this room, for caring. Thank you, and God bless you all.
Dan Barth.
Good evening. Donald Barth. I live here in Cobb County. I guess I'm slow. I guess I'm the slowest guy in this room because I don't know where I belong. I went over to voter registration on Friday. I said, where the hell do I belong? They said, oh, you're over in two. Okay, well, look on your website. What's it say? I don't know. It says you're in three. Where the hell do I belong? Come on, help me. And this is a question. Not one of you is a bad person. I get along. Boy, if I had my chance, I would have voted for you in November, but the rules were changed. Here comes the November election. I am moved out of three, so I can't vote for you. I would have gladly voted for you. But I look at the history lesson. In 2018, it states that Joanne ran and had a 51% margin, so it's very close. So that's what confuses me. It's not Joanne, it's not you, it's not you, it's not you, and it's not you. But do you see the precedent that's being set that if we move Joanne over there to East Cobb, we move Joanne where she can be elected without, hands down, she's elected, now you move her back? Do you all see a problem with that? Because I'm slow. I see a real problem coming. You're setting a precedent. Okay, well, we can't get this color person, we can't get a red-haired person, so we'll move them, and then we'll change the districts back. I don't know if y'all cannot understand that I understand Joanne would never have done that. Eh, GOP I worry about, but what I'm telling you is this is not Trump, and you know, we got to go by the Constitution. The Constitution was written this way. I don't agree with all of y'all's decisions. If I stood up and said, I'm going to have home rule in my neighborhood because I don't agree with what you said, do you see a problem with that? So what we're saying is every damn person in this room has been screwed by the legislator. Every person in here in Cobb County and everywhere else has been got. If I had known it, I would have jumped on board ahead of this. Old Mr. Hill Wright said, no, you're over. No, Hill, I'm over. No, you're over. Hell, I don't know where the hell I am. Y'all don't know where the hell I am. I can go to the county and I can get two answers. I can't be in two and three. That makes five. Am I in five? Come on, ladies, we've got to fix this. Let's all go down to the state and put our foot where it counts. I mean, that was a clear discrimination when they did this. It was clear discrimination. And now we are setting up another discrimination. I didn't get to vote this year. Oh, wait, I voted in 2018, 2022, that's one, two, three, four. See, now I'm over in four. I've been to two, three, four, and five. Help me, ladies. Help me find out where I belong. I got things up in my head, but the problem is you have set a precedent where you could put anybody you want in anytime you want. The state has set a precedent where they can do what the hell they want, and law says they can. The law says they can. I don't know. I'm really confused, and I hope y'all find an answer. Does anybody know where the hell I belong? Because Marietta don't want me. I got enough problems over there.
We'll all take you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyway, y'all have a good evening. I'm not mad at anybody. Whenever we leave here, we go home and we move like, you know, togetherness. It's great. This has been a wonderful Commissioner in the time she's there. This has been a good Commissioner. You're a good Commissioner. You're a good Commissioner. You're a good Chairwoman. But nobody knows who in the hell I am and where I belong. Y'all put your heads together, give me a number. Thank you.
Chairwoman, that was the last public speaker.
It's amazing what a little comedy can do. With that, we are now moving on to our appointments tab. We have a number of appointments to announce. The first one is to announce the reappointment of Enrico Washington to the Airport Advisory Board. Second is to announce the reappointment of Mark Wade to the Electrical Advisory Board. I need to pull Agenda Item Number 47. Agenda Item Number 48, I need to announce the reappointment of Tasha Siddles to the Neighborhood Safety Commission. I'm announcing the reappointment of David Knight to the Neighborhood Safety Commission. I'm announcing Commissioner Richardson as Vice Chair for 2023, and also announcing Commissioner Sheffield as Board Liaison for Cobb Travel and Tourism. And that concludes the announcements for today. And we will now move on to the Commissioners' Public Address. Once the slides are queued up, we'll start with Commissioner Gambrell.
Cobb Parks 2023 Spring Adult Softball League Registration is now open. Team registration will close on Wednesday, February 22nd, and individual registration will close on Wednesday, February 15th. The cost is $400 for a team or $50 for an individual. All teams are guaranteed eight games. Leagues are offered at the Al Bishop Complex, Terrell Mill Park, and Kenworth Park. Games are scheduled to begin the week of March 6th. To register, you can visit cobbparks.org and click on the QR code provided here. Registration is open for the Parks Valentine's Day themed cookie decorating class from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Friday, February 10th at the Ward Recreation Center. Learn to make something sweet for your special Valentine. For more information, you can call 770-528-8885, or you can email tara.broman@cobbcounty.org. The center is located at 4845 Dallas The center is located at 4845 Dallas Highway in Powder Springs. Lastly, you can join our Cobb 4H as it hosts its annual plant sale to raise funds for 4H youth development as well as agricultural and natural resources programming. Plant sale pre-orders are being taken now through March 3 at the Cobb County Extension Office. Pre-order your plants today while supplies last. Thank you for supporting Cobb 4H Youth through their annual 4H plant sale. You can find the brochure on the QR code as provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Happy Lunar Year. There's always something to celebrate. Going to the next slide. So from the office, we've got the Priorities Tour coming up. For those that have gone through it before, excellent. For those that haven't, it is a month dedicated to basically talking about whatever is on your mind. Just schedule some time with me. I ask at least three people on the call. But there is a Priorities Tour calendar, so it's just a matter of where I go over the priorities that I've heard from around the district, and it's your chance to give me your suggestions, whether it's removing some of the things or adding some of the things or expanding any of those items as well or just getting clarification. So please take advantage of the Priorities Tour because I take all of that feedback and turn that into what we will be focused on for the year in the Q1 Town Hall. Thank you. So from the community, Human Trafficking Awareness Forum. January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month. The Marietta Roswell Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority is inviting all parents, students, and community members to attend an eye-opening experience on human trafficking on January 28 from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at East Cobb Middle School. This event will be an immersive experience that will feature human trafficking simulation experience, a panel discussion with law enforcement experts from Cobb PD, and an artistic poster expression experience. Register today for this event for you and your youth. And then lastly, free income tax prep. It's that time of the year. Don't miss your chance for free income tax preparation from AARP. See the daily schedule of Cobb facilities throughout the county. Appointments are required unless otherwise noted. You do not need to be a member of AARP to participate. The program is for low to moderate income taxpayers. Bring your 2021 tax return and 2022 tax documents. And hopefully, I spoke slowly enough for you all to capture the QR codes on the respective slides. That concludes my announcements for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrell?
Thank you. Last week, we held the first District 3 Town Hall for 2023 for Police Technology. And I would like to say, if you weren't in attendance, you missed a truly engaging, interactive, and informative presentation by Cobb PD. They provided information on new technology being used by the Cobb Police Department such as flock systems, license plate readers, the Real-Time Crime Center, facial recognition, and more. Thanks to all who attended, the Tim DeLeey Senior Center staff, Police Chief Stuart Van Hooser, Deputy Chief Dan Farrell, Major Stanley Bell, Captain Darren Hull, Lieutenant Brian Kitchens, and Lieutenant David Thorpe, and District 3 Community Engagement Officer Michael Justice. For more information on Cobb Police, including policies on the subjects mentioned above, visit cobbcounty.org-public-safety. And if you're interested in applying to be part of this amazing department, visit cobbcounty.org-public-safety/employment. January Pet Special and Free Adoptions on Mondays. We've slashed prices so you can get the best price of the year on used pets, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Monday, January 30. These pets are certified pre-owned and free for every customer who visits. Our multi-point inspections include spay or neuter, vaccinations, and microchipping. Come to the shelter, no appointment is needed. What a great deal. Browse our selection online at cobbcounty.org/pets. And if you can't make it on Mondays, you can still take home a pet. Dogs weighing 25 pounds or more and all cats are $20.23 in January. Get started finding your pet match at cobbcounty.org/pets. The shelter is located at 1060 Al Bishop Drive in Marietta.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm used to seeing your final slide. But go ahead.
Yeah. I just have a few words to say tonight on all the stuff going on in the county. First of all, it's very unfortunate that Cobb County, who has always been the county that other jurisdictions looked up to and wanted to model after, is now in the news in a negative light. The home rule challenge by the majority of this board has increased tensions on the board and in the community. It's hard to comprehend how a map that was passed in the legislature, signed into law by the governor, and certified by our own Board of Elections is now null and void by the county attorney's opinion regarding home rule, ignoring letters from the Legislative Council, the Secretary of State, and a statement from the State Attorney General saying that this is unconstitutional and illegal. Not only have I been harmed as I ran for this seat on the map approved by the state and was duly elected on November 8, the citizens of District 3 have also been harmed as they do not have a representation from their duly elected official and feel their vote has been discounted. The Cobb County Board of Elections certified the general election results on November 15. So if the amended map is the law per the county attorney filed on October 26, just under two weeks from the general election and effective the day it is filed, what does that do to the voters of all the districts in Cobb? Does the amended map now interfere with an election? So now it's up to the courts to decide the fate of this board and what map is legal and who is legal to serve. I appreciate the supporters and those in opposition here tonight and those that have sent emails and made phone calls with their thoughts and input on this matter. Please continue to pray for all of us. I truly appreciate your support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sheffield?
District 4 News and Updates. Actually, before I get to that, I just want to just add, with respect to everything that's going on with home rule. For the last several meetings, we've heard quite a bit about the people that were harmed with the Cobb Board of Commissioners invoking home rule and that people are lost. They don't know where to go. They don't know where to vote. They don't know what to do. But while we're asked to be sympathetic to those that, you know, feel that they have been disenfranchised by the majority's board decision for home rule, there's no mention at all of the voters that have been disenfranchised with the map that drew Commissioner Richardson out of her district. And it's just the big ball of paradox right now. I get that people are concerned because of the thought that they may want to be in District 3, but it's going to play out in the courts. It's going to play out in the courts. And I just ask that as we move forward, for those that feel that they have been disenfranchised by our decision, to please also keep in mind those that have been disenfranchised that voted for Commissioner Richardson and looked forward to her serving them for four years.
Thank you.
Okay. I had the pleasure to present a proclamation to Ms. Doris Precious Buckner in recognition of her 100th birthday. The room was filled with family members, friends, and her Zeta Sorority Sisters, residents, and staff members. Ms. Buckner is a graduate of the University of Michigan, Detroit College of Law. Her extensive career includes being the labor mediator for the state of Michigan, staff attorney for the UAW GM Legal Services, and many more accomplishments. When asked if she could share her secret to longevity, she commented, "Get plenty of rest." Are you interested in serving your community for the new year? I am seeking qualified individuals to fill District 4 Advisory Board positions. For those interested in applying, please contact our office at 770-528-3311 or apply at the link provided on the slide. You may find the qualifications in the Cobb County Code or the Georgia Code. For a description of the boards, please visit cobbcounty.org. We need your help in solving some zoning code cases in District 4. Our office will compile a list of zoning code cases that have outstanding items to complete or stipulations that have not been met. An example would be amenities at a subdivision that were not provided to the community as promised by the developer or a gravel driveway that should be on a hardened surface such as concrete or asphalt. If you are aware of any outstanding items of an approved zoning or variance application that has not been completed, please, please send that information to my office so that we can hold the developers accountable. Please send that email to didra.watts@cobbcounty.org. Calling all young artists, budding songstresses, or Broadway-bound young stars. The Kiwanis Club of Marietta is sponsoring its annual art and music showcase on Saturday, February 11. This competition is open to all 6th through 12th grade students in Cobb and Marietta schools. Interested parties should register by February 1. For more information, contact Angela Sparks at asparks@marietta.city-city.org. And you can tell the importance of this symposium by the fact that it's been mentioned at least twice already. But I encourage you all, if you are free on January 28, to join the Symposium for Human Trafficking. The South Cobb Community Resource Fair. The Cobb Collaborative and the First Christian Church of Mabelton are looking for vendors to participate in their upcoming community event on May 6. This will be a wonderful opportunity to connect with neighbors and chat with organizations that offer resources to help empower families and communities to thrive. For more information, contact Barry Smith at oh, boy, barrysmith@berry@fcc-m.com or call, which is probably easier, Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. With all that we have going on before you press play, I just wanted to take some time for us to recognize some of the things that we accomplished in 2022. And I put a power lifter here because I believe that 2022 has been a year of heavy lifts for us. And for anyone who's ever worked out, you know, when you first get under that bar, it seems very heavy. But the more you continue to lift it, the easier it gets. And the weights that seemed heavy at first are not as heavy. The things that Cobb County are experiencing, as one speaker shared, is a list of many challenges that Cobb County has had. But this is not the first time we are lifting a heavy weight. We'll get through it, and we'll be better for it. It's difficult. It's tough. You know, if you ever power lifted, and power lifters, you know, they grunt, and they don't look pretty or sound nice. But it's not to necessarily look pretty and sound nice when you're going through the difficulty of lifting that weight up. It's what and who you become afterwards. I believe we'll be better after this. So I just ask that we get through this discomfort and understanding it's a process. And when there was change on this board, it was a process. And we're seeing it play out in front of us. And as I was reminded by a Commissioner's this is something we have to go through, to get through. And we're getting through it. So with that, just want to take some time to reflect on some things that we did in 2022. We started out with COVID at the top of the year, remember? We couldn't even come together. We had a big shift in our map to move along a Commissioner, but we asserted home rule. We have a new city that's with us. We have multiple meetings to address it. Many plans and studies were underway. We've also had a lot of group meetings and collaborative efforts across the county. We passed a significant budget, including raising minimum pay, funding additional staff. We had over 3,000 citizens participate in our ARP discussions. We finalized years of negotiations with our Coliseum Authority. We're keeping our county safe with improvements made across public safety. You'll have to come back to the State of the County address, actually, hear this in more detail. But we had a significant number of improvements. We had a Vector Resource Center open to help our veterans. We had the signing of our first-ever agreement with Cobb Gwinnett Fulton and DeKalb to bring transit amongst our agencies. We all voted to support a transit referendum in '24. Our Cobb International Airport is expanding with an agreement with Hawthorne. Our Cobb Fleet Department is award-winning and number one in Southeast Fleet Management. We opened up a new elections office. Cobb Senior Services, you are 50 today, and you kicked off your financial assistance program for seniors. Cobb County Water is helping save Cobb County money with all of its innovation. We are modernizing our procurement practices and better engaging DBEs. We graduated our first youth commission, and we had the return of Cobb 101. We also had Cobb Parks open up old Clarkdale Park, received funding to expand its youth programming. My God, Cobb was in jeopardy last year. And last, but not least, we were recognized on a national stage. We've had a lot of great things happen for us. This is just a small snapshot of other things that I'm looking forward to adding when we do our full address. But with all the challenges we have, we have some great things going on. And I know together as a board, we'll get through this and we'll be stronger because of it. With that, everyone, have a good evening. Thank you.